Welcome. I need a motion with the purpose of a journey to executive session for the purpose of discussing a student discipline matter and as well as an employee's discipline matter with our attorneys. Carrie, thank you. And Eric is my second. All those in favor? Motion passes for zero. We're off to executive. You're welcome back.
We are returning from executive session. I need a motion to open. Carrie is the second. Kristen, all those in favor? Motion passes by zero. We are back in open session. Thank you.
Okay. And I'd like to have our students. Yes, wonderful. I'd like to ask our students to read and be.
..................
Thank you. Okay. And we start off with the straightest remarks. Mr. Carlson, do you go first?
Yes, I'm just going to reserve my comments for the presentation.
Ms. Gosh, actually, I'm sorry. Is it officially Dr. Gosh?
Thank you. Good evening. I have several comments. The first is Brewster High School 2023. I know that you'll hear from this group in a bit, but I would like to thank the members of BHS 2023 and publicly acknowledge their efforts, especially the leadership of Mrs. Horler, both the members that are here tonight and those that are unable to make tonight a compromise. A passionate group that is deeply invested in the success of our students. And I thank them for their candor and creativity as we revision Brewster High School for the years to come. Second is the New York State ELA assessments in grades three through eight will take place next Tuesday and Wednesday, April 2nd and 3rd. The staff at CB Star and Wells Middle School are diligently preparing for these assessments, so I thank them for their efforts. I also want to highlight a reminder that we are piloting computer-based testing this year, both in sixth grade ELA and third grade mathematics, which will take place in May. We've been told that this is the direction that the state education department is moving in, and we see this approach as a viable entry point while student test scores are still decoupled from staff evaluations. Second is our K-5 math pilots. So today, we held the first of several focus groups for staff to share their feedback of the two mathematics curricular resources that we were piloting, K-5. We were gathering a lot of data, including student impressions. We'll be asking parents for any feedback through a letter and Google form that will send out later this week. And we'll be back here in a month to make a presentation and recommendation to you. And finally, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Maggie Andriella, who's on tonight's agenda as the be-appointed, hopefully, principal of CB Star Elementary School. Maggie is a highly valued employee, and we're so glad that she's taking the leap. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Dr. Minick.
Good evening, board trustees. Just a mention of something that's really magnificent that happened this past weekend. This is the first time in the history of Brewster High School in the district that we have a team, the CyberBots, who competed in the first and first stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology Competition held at Rockland Community College. Our team, the CyberBots, led by Mrs. Greenfield with the support of Mrs. Horler, Mrs. Sullivan, Dr. Young, and several parents who are dedicated to the club and for seeing our students involved in such an amazing event where truly all the skills of, you know, the science skills and math skills come to play. But in addition, the really important soft skills, the social-emotional skills that children don't often get to show us unless they're in a competition of that magnitude. Even though this is the first time that our students competed, these nineteen members of this team, this team ranked out forty-six teams. It's the first time, first competition. They ranked 12th out of forty-six teams. And the awards that they received are as follows. The 2019 Highest Rookie Seed Award, and it celebrates a rookie team's outstanding success in qualifying matches in their first competition. And they also received the 2019 Rookie Inspiration Award, celebrates a rookie team's outstanding success in advancing respect and appreciation for engineering and engineers, both within their school and as well as in their community. So on behalf of the board, I invite them to the April 9th board meeting, where you'll see the team members. You'll see Cyberbot 7504, which is the robot that they built that does amazing things. And they were very competitive. And if you had seen our students, you would have been so proud of them. And I think it's worth their appearance at a board meeting along with the wonderful parents and Mrs. Greenfield and obviously the high school administrative teams, Mrs. Horler, Mrs. Sullivan, and Dr. Young to also be here to receive, you know, recognition for doing such an amazing thing, which only leads to more competitions as well as potentially participation, hopefully, in a region or a competition, which is really the Academy Awards of Robotics Competition. So that's all I wanted to say. And I'm just gratified to be there along with Dr. Gosh, Mrs. Horler, and anyone else who were able to get to Rockland Community College this weekend. It was just a moment of pride for our high school. Thank you.
Thank you. For me, I just have a brief update right now, and then I'll have some other comments later on in the agenda. But just last night, we had another C-19 meeting. And this meeting was with the school counselors and the school psychologists. It was a great meeting. We were able to discuss just pretty much across the board the increase in the mental health needs of students and just even over the past five years, the drastic changes that are going on. And so it was great to have that conversation. So we'll continue the conversation. But in keeping with the work that we're doing with the mayor coming down from the state, it makes sense why they're kind of that. There's a lot going on. And, you know, it's right to do these things for our students anyway. So that's it for now. And the student representative. Welcome.
Hello. My sidekick, Karen, couldn't join me today, but I will get started. Get started with all the announcements. First, the Spring musical Mamma Mia was a great success. They had all sold-out shows, people dancing in the audience. And the cast are looking forward to hearing from the Metro nominations, which are awards given out for the best in theater in the New York and New Jersey areas, which come out in May. Model UN had their conference over a weekend, which they did great at as usual. Senior scholarships are out now. There's dozens of opportunities for seniors to earn money for college. So everyone's gone crazy during their study halls in the lounge in order to complete as many as they're eligible for. The Mill Ball will be held April 5th at 6:30 at the Sherman Country Club for the ROTC students. There's a prom project meeting April 4th at 6:30. And another Friday morning during PLC, all junior students and parents should attend. The Art Honor Society induction ceremonies this Thursday. And tomorrow at 7:30, the PTSA is hosting a seminar about security with Officer Grayson.
Thank you. Okay. So we move on to our presentations, recognition, discussion. And first up is the 2018 New York State School Counselor of the Year. Jessica McCann.
Mrs. McCann is a superstar. She works tirelessly to ensure the success of all students. I've had the pleasure of seeing her in action and seeing her work to ensure that every student gets across the finish line. And that's the goal. And there's not a more dedicated and committed professional in our district than Mrs. McCann. And it's a pleasure that we're able to recognize her for being recognized as the 2018 New York State School Counselor of the Year. Mrs. Horler was in Washington, DC for the presentation, so she's going to extol the virtues of Mrs. McCann.
So every year, each state picks Counselor of the Year, and then we have a National Counselor of the Year. For obvious reasons, Jess McCann was New York State Counselor of the Year 2018. Earlier this year, Jess was invited to a gala in Washington, DC. She graciously invited me to go down with her. And we spent a lovely night at Union Station, where they transformed Union Station into a black tie event with hundreds of people and counselors from around the country. Previous to that, Jess was able to meet with Dr. Jill Biden and former United States Secretary of Education John King. Later in the evening, we had the award ceremony, where they received their awards. One of the many things that Jess was nominated for, and this is probably the key thing for her, was her small group guidance. What Jess won't tell you is that she designed and coordinated our small group guidance program. It is modeled for schools around the state. School counselors meet with groups of 10 to 12 students, which helps them build relationships and encourages students to see Guidance Office as a safe place where they can feel welcome and turn to if you have questions. For Jess, this is how she is. This is just the way it is. You know, she's always there as an advocate for students. She's great at analyzing an issue, developing a solution, and advocating for students. It's what makes her tick. Gets her up in the morning, gets to work, and she's always focused on the students. She's data-driven, the ultimate problem solver, humble and brilliant all at the same time. That's what makes her magical. I told her I'd weave in magical for her. The National Counselor of the Year felt that he had unicorn qualities, but I feel Jess has more magical qualities. So I think she's really transformational, and I think she really makes our guidance department tick, and it really is the hub of the high school. So for that and for so many other reasons, Jess is the New York State Counselor of the Year. And I can't thank her enough for what she does.
Brewster Award of Excellence presented to Ms. Jess McCann in recognition of being selected as the 2018 New York State School Counselor of the Year, March 26, 2019. Brewster Center of School of Education. All the board members, please come on. Thank you. Okay. Now we move on to our second presentation, Brewster High School 2023 Task Force. Presentation by Michelle Gosh. Thank you, Horler, Danielle Sullivan.
So at the beginning of the year, Dr. Gosh and I were sitting together having one of our weekly meetings. And we were trying to figure out how to move the high school forward in a strategic, intelligent, and intentional manner. And what we decided was we needed a committee. And it ended up being a large committee. We picked a date, five years in the future. And then we decided the best way to manage this was to backward plan, to look at what are our curriculum options? What are our instructional policies? How do we change? Really, what a comprehensive public high school offers? And how can we do that and get the most input from all of our team members? So we invited all of our liaisons, and we realized that the majority of the liaisons will not be teaching in 2020 or 2024. So we needed them to bring a plus one, so they all got to bring a plus one, someone who would be here in 2023, 2024, and who was looking to the future and looking to make some long-term effective changes. So that's how we started. We looked, our first question was, what are we doing and what will we need to meet the needs of all of our students? And then we went through, we really looked at, how good are we at addressing high achievers? How good are we middle-of-the-road? What about our ELL students? Or the strictly unmotivated students? And these were the guiding questions. And these were, our question was, how do we get better at teaching all of these subgroups and not just the high achiever? What do we want our best Brewster to look like in terms of curriculum, instruction, and assessment? What do 21st century skills really look like in high school? How do you integrate these skills into more curriculum and different options? What do we need to accomplish this? And we did all of this in five meetings. So, and it's an ongoing process. So we have plans for future plans. We have options. We're going to talk about what we put in place for next year, what we've put in place currently. And then next year, we'll come back and we'll tell you what we have in place for the year after. So what's our longstanding commitment that everybody up there is making? We've changed, and we're looking at changing community service, advisory, SUPUP, and each of us is going to speak about this, elective changes, learning center, and guidance.
So community service is something that Brewster High School does extremely well. And what we wanted to do was really look at serving the community, our own community, giving back to our community. So we now offer over 40 co-curricular clubs and organizations. One of the goals that we are implementing as part of this Brewster High School 2023 is that upon graduation, students will have completed 20 hours of community service from within the school community. And what that looks like? Students, we want all students to feel a sense of belonging, to really get that opportunity to be part of the community, make connections, be part of a positive culture. So with that club or organization, we are encouraging and we are directing all ninth graders to join a club or organization. And through that club or organization, they will be able to give back to the school community by carrying out that community service. And that may look like tutoring their peers, going to one of the elementary schools, such as the Mammoth Fund that occurs every year. And currently, we are tracking or we are working and finalizing protocols to make sure that the students can track their hours that they do earn throughout their four years. So we're looking at some electronic ways to make sure that we can provide the evidence for that. And that's really one of the biggest components of the community service piece. We'd like to continue that and really grow it stronger for all of our students.
So what are the options? Because of New York State mental health laws that we are looking at, it's an advisory program. Think of advisory, as someone had once said, think of advisory at the sole your school. And in everything you do, remember that you teach students before you teach subjects. Advisory is the place in the schedule where that idea has its core, and then it spreads to everything else we do. So that's really what our founding principle is behind this advisory course. We believe we are looking at a once-a-month advisory, approximately 35 minutes in a day, once a month. We are going to be planning our topics April 5th. I have a small committee, a specific advisory committee, that's going to be planning the topics and actually putting the complete lesson together for the teachers. That way, we'll be able to just turnkey this, give it to the teacher, and every teacher will be included. A small advisory group of 10 to 15 would be able to deliver that instruction. We're looking at Y advisory because it's going to deliver a high quality of social-emotional learning, stronger student-teacher development and relationships. The hope is it changes discipline and behavioral problems, particularly some of the smaller issues like lateness, cutting class, vaping, any of those small things that we can change a culture of. Delivering the same consistent message across the board when it comes to discipline and when it comes to common criticisms that need to arise in the school. Intentionally foster a school culture. If the only way to change a culture is to change a building and the feeling behind it, an advisory will do that. Some of the possible topics: goal setting, study skills, school-life balance, internet safety, bullying, diversity, peer conflicts, financial thoughts for the future, transitions, advocacy, investing in oneself, healthy relationships, if my teacher only knew. Right now, we're looking at developing eight to 10 advisory lessons from soup to nuts. And we're probably going to need one day in April and then one day over the summer to do that.
So when we talk about the mental health for our students, obviously, we're talking about the role of a guidance counselor, a school psychologist, social worker, as well as all the teachers who see a student in their daily lives. So this plan really helps us to address that. You know, one of the things that we're looking to do is build relationships. And as Mrs. Horler mentioned, a really good way of doing that is to make sure that every student in the building has an adult that they have developed a close relationship with. So that's really going to be a benefit of this plan. Some of the other things that we're doing in the Guidance Office is obviously going to be college and career readiness. That's one of the three focuses that we look at up there. So every year, we're driven by data. So we're asking questions like, what are colleges looking for in our students? How can we help to ensure that once they've been accepted to a college, they're successful once they get there? And how can we prepare our students to meet their college and career goals? Okay, so we have this conversation with students early and often, starting in ninth grade. And we frame the conversation with, college is not your only option, but if it's an option that you feel about, there's a way for you to get there. And they need to be thinking about that all along. One of the ways that this 2023 plan will help us to get there is that it will expose students to more content, which helps, oops. Can I help myself here? It exposes students to more content. It allows students to challenge themselves in appropriate ways through SUPU classes, through elective that they have an interest in. So it really helps us to allow students to better develop their interests and better develop their sense of self, which is going to be crucial in helping them to identify a college or career that's appropriate for them. We also see a lot of value in serving others, right? So we want to make sure that our students see the value in that, that they can portray the value to a college. So the community service component will help us with that. And Ms. Monti actually pointed me to a resource that I included on here about a character collaborative. So this is a program that's subscribed to by a number of well-known colleges, where they're basically trying to quantify character. How do you root character in an application? And what are we going to be expecting our students to look like in the future? So this really helps us to address that. We want to make sure that our students are well-rounded, well-adjusted, not just that they can get high grades in their classes, but that they can be committed members of a class and a college.
Good evening. So one of the topics that came up was how to address all the different needs with different levels of students. We talked about AP and International Baccalaureate. And I've been teaching a SUPU class for about 19 years. We've had it at school for more than 20. We currently have SUPU sociology, psychology, public affairs, and Spanish. And it's a great program. They offer a lot of support. Syracuse is a fantastic institution. They use the motto credit with credibility. It's called concurrent enrollment because the students can earn Syracuse College credits through high school experience and get credit for things like public participation in government economics while they're taking public affairs and economics. So there have so many benefits to it, and so many different students can do well in public affairs. There's no high-stakes test at the end in the way there is for an AP test or the International Baccalaureate test or even the region's exam. It's not a high-stakes standardized test. It's more of an authentic assessment. Sometimes it's inquiry-based or project-based. They give us a lot of autonomy in the classroom, allow us to formulate what the final exam's going to be or final assessment. They have great support for the students and the teachers. They visit the school two times a year for each class that's being taught. There's an advisor from Syracuse that comes down, speaks to the students, observes the teacher. Teachers have two times a year where we can go to either Syracuse University or the Lubin House in New York City for a kind of faculty meeting with other teachers from around the tri-state area. And we do professional development, all at really no cost to the district at all. So we kick that around a bit. And again, through my experience, I had many students, both ENL, special education, sometimes unmotivated students, who really weren't motivated by the rigor and the curriculum that Syracuse offered, and they had success. So it's not just for the highly motivated student. One of the benefits here is that Syracuse will entertain and consider tuition assistance. So if there's anyone on free or reduced lunch program, they get an automatic 60% off the tuition. And if there's more of a need, they can apply for that. And Syracuse has been very good about offering assistance so that the students can take it at almost no cost. Currently, they just increased the tuition $3 per credit. So it's $115 per credit. So it costs $345 for three credits for Syracuse. If you went to Syracuse, that would cost you $2,550. So many of our students come back and reach out, either through email or visits to the school, asking for a copy of the syllabus so they can show their professor or show their advisor. They either get excused from taking a lower-level class. I think it's over 90%, closer to 98% of acceptable colleges that accept the credit from Syracuse through the concurrent enrollment program. You know, there's a lot of possibilities. And we are going to increase our offerings in the social studies department. Two classes that we're going to offer next year are SUPU economics and SUPU sports management. And we've got teachers that are considering being trained next summer for other courses like entrepreneurship or there's another psychology course.
Personal finance.
Personal finance. It's another economics class, both personal finance. Yep, chemistry, there are English classes. And there was a little disappointment in our music and our fine arts departments because they don't currently offer anything. But the person that came down, Eric Young from Syracuse, said, if you guys really want to put a program together, you can talk to some of your other peers in other schools. We'll develop something. And you can go up and we'll find a teacher up here that would advise it, and we'll train you, and we'll run with it. So there's that possibility. It has to be developed, but they were definitely willing to entertain it. So it's a great program. Everybody that teaches it currently and former teachers like Ms. Gosh or Dr. Gosh really enjoyed it and loved it and just can't say any great things about it. So we're hoping that our students will take advantage of that and sign up for it. We just really ask that they make an effort. They come not expecting, you know, to just walk in. They really kind of have to prove themselves. And if you have a good workout, then you'll do fine in these classes. If you think you're going to be absent a lot and you've got to blow it off, it's not a very successful program for students like that. We've got to really make sure that the community understands that when you take the college all the course, that you're not going to get 100 or 98. You know, you might end up at 85. And that's fine, but the rigor's much harder. It's really a lot of schedules and deadlines and things that you have to meet. But it's more, you know, like being in college. So they know exactly what to expect when they get there. So hopefully that applies, and we'll look forward to doing that. Thank you.
So some of our elective changes, I'm really, I'm so proud to say of all of our science electives. And I've been really fortunate to be on the science K-12 task force and be part of the BHS 2023 team. So some of the changes that will be occurring in the Department of Science So some of the changes that will be occurring in the Department of Science are laboratory periods embedded in the schedule for a majority of the science classes, opportunities to earn college credit. Mr. Gallagher spoke about the Supa chemistry. There's actually an opportunity to earn eight credits, and it's the equivalent of a chemistry or a science major going into college, taking general chem one and general chem two. And the training and the partnership with Syracuse University that continues throughout the year is valuable. We've also looked at opportunities for all students to continue to take science classes that third and that fourth year of high school. So some of the electives that have come out of this really represent a diverse course selection that we've, you know, based on student interests and teacher passion and expertise in some of the different areas, such as the course in sustainability, which is derivative out of the environmental science component, natural disasters. One of, one of these really amazing courses, physics of sports, astrobiology, a research and science class. So there are some amazing science electives and science courses that will be coming forth as we continue with this. Also, we have a technology class, Intro to IT, that is going to be co-taught by Mr. Jim Tralor, our Director of Technology and Innovation, and Mr. Breen, our Library and Media Specialist. And we'll be able to, they'll be able to work with students, and they'll be able to develop skills in terms of the IT, the technology component. So these are some of the electives that will be in place beginning next year.
So the state requires that students take four years of English. So up at the high school, we're really trying to do the most we can with the time we have. For that reason, we're adding back in every other writing, every other day writing lab that we used to have. We're adding that back in for 2019, 2020. For 2019, we're also adding in a presentational speaking course. Our goal is to make that Supa class for 2020 and 2021. However, we didn't make the cutoff, the timeline for the Supa training. So next year, we're hoping to offer that just simply as a straight elective with the intent of moving towards Supa for the following year. In the future, for 2020 and 2021, we're also looking at whether or not we want to stick with, stay with DCC as our concurrent English class, which is our six-credit English class, or move on to Supa. And that's a decision I think we're all going to have to make together. But that's our plans for English.
All right. I'll try to go through this fast. One of the things that, I don't even look like. One of the things that, I teach geometry, and I'm going to go through slides real fast about, these are some of the things that I build at home. Okay, so on my hobby, I build, I do a lot of construction work, a lot of carpentry, a lot of building things. And as I, as I build these things, I realize how much math I use in this, all right? And every day, teaching geometry, I have students saying, when are we ever going to use this? So we developed a course, and going through next year, we're going to offer mathematics in carpentry and construction. Okay, so it's going to be a class that is going to incorporate a lot of math and carpentry, a lot, mostly geometry. So I visited Carmel last week, and they still have shop class. And these are the things that we want to envision, that we want to teach kids how to, how to build things, how to do framing, how to do roof rafters. All of that is geometry and trigonometry. And we want to incorporate that into the classroom. So our plan is to, in the classroom, to design and then test things, make sure everything works, and then we'll go outside and build. And it won't happen like every week, but it might happen every two weeks, every three weeks. And it's a way of teaching the kids where they're going to use this math in the real world. So here's, these are some of the things that they did over at Carmel. And this is kind of the curriculum that I was thinking about teaching next year. And if you saw the buzz on the kids in the building about a course like this, where they're actually going to use it, it's phenomenal. So we're really excited about offering this class next year. And I want to thank Nikki for going full force with this. And we're really excited about taking this to the kids in September. And Mr. Heinz is going to be a guest speaker. He doesn't know that, so right now, now he knows.
Well, we just found out we actually have space. So we just found space today, and we think we're just changing so the footprint of the classroom, we can make it happen. So that's, that's our plan. So, you know, from here, so this is everything we put into place going into, from this year and into next year's schedule. So all of these classes are already in the schedule. We're looking at building the schedule. In fact, I was sitting with Ms. Preper this morning, and we were adding all this stuff into, if they can, just to build the schedule. And that's just our first year. So the hope is that each year, we'll be adding, we're modifying, we're changing additional courses, additional curriculum, and changing how we assess our students. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on to our 2019 to 2020 budget discussion. Mr. Allison.
Okay, good evening. So this is our third budget presentation, an update from our last board meeting two weeks ago. We always start out with our profile of the graduate because obviously, the most important part of our budget is for our students and these critical skills that each of our students will be able to achieve by the time they graduate here at Brewster. This is a recap of the factors that affect our budget each year. So each year is unique in terms of budget development. And we look back on last year, and we recall, we had a significant increase in TRS rate, and that resulted in several hundred thousand dollars of additional costs that we had to send to New York State for the pension system. Fast forward a year, and in our current year, 1920, we actually have pension relief. So the TRS rate, rate actually decreased by sixteen point six percent, which results in several hundred thousand dollars of cost avoidance. Further, we have a unique year where our tax cap, the benchmark set by New York State, is at four point zero six, and that is primarily due to an increase in commercial property tax growth, as well as inflation or the consumer price effects. Now, looking ahead to 2021, we want to caution you that the TRS rate is looking like it will increase again. The TRS Exerial Board released a statement earlier this year, and by quoting them, tepid investment result, tepid investment returns will result in higher future employer contribution rates, meaning we should certainly anticipate another increase in our TRS rate for next year. Career and technical education participation is increasing as our students are attending the Career and Tech Program at Voces more regularly, and that will likely result in also an increase in our budget for next year. Health insurance and ERS are likely to increase as they do each year. So just to kind of look ahead to 2021, again, recognizing that each year is unique, however, all indications are that our TRS is likely going to take a significant increase next year, which is going to be very challenging for us entering next year's budget. But here we are in 1920, and we have a decrease in TRS, which is great. We also have the tax cap, the benchmark set for us in order to raise our tax levy. And what's driving the increase in the tax cap? Well, we reviewed over the past few board meetings that one of the major factors is something called a tax base growth factor, which measures growth in the commercial properties within the tax base due to significant additions to existing buildings or brand-new construction of commercial buildings. We learned that a one property in particular, the Algonquin Natural Gas Compressor Company was building a new plant in the southeast, which would impact our tax base, tax base, and they would ultimately be diluting the taxes of all other properties. And that's shown here as an example in these two pie charts. You see here in the red shaded area, which is the current commercial portion, and then the blue shaded area, which is the residential portion. And what you see for next year would be a shift in the tax base, in that this new property coming on, which has, which increased its assessed value by about thirty million dollars, is coming on to the assessment roll. And that, again, dilutes the portion of the tax, tax share for all other properties, residential included. So as of our last Budget Advisory Committee meeting, we were asked by the Budget Advisory, okay, so we understand that the tax cap is at four percent, and we understand that the Algonquin Transmission Company is going to absorb a portion of that, but what's that going to look like for the other residential homeowners? So what we did over the past, over the course of the past two weeks was we investigated this further in order to get back to the Budget Advisory Committee. What we learned is there's a timing difference between the state's tax base growth factor change, which impacts our 1920 tax cap, and the town's assessment roll change, which affected our 1819 tax rates. So the town already recognized this new property that came on to the tax rolls. However, the state has not yet recognized this until 1920, which affects our tax cap. So Algonquin actually already came on to our tax, our assessment rolls, or I should say, the town's assessment rolls, which affected the 1819 tax rates. So Algonquin paid eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars in school taxes in 1819, more so than they did the prior year, which alleviated the tax burden of residential properties. So that was evidenced by the tax rate decreases in both Southeast and Patterson, which Southeast decreased by point two percent and Patterson decreased by point three percent. Both of those coming despite a two-point-two percent tax levy increase. And again, just as a reminder, the differences between tax cap, tax levy, tax rate, because it's all very confusing. The tax cap is the benchmark set forth by the state through a complicated formula that is needed for each school district. The tax levy is the amount that the board actually adopts in terms of the amount of taxes that they need to raise to support the school budget. And tax rates are the, is the amount applied to each unit of assessed value in order to raise a amount of taxes to support the school system, and that's applied against each individual property's assessed value. So again, in 1819, tax rates decreased, and the reason why they decreased was a result of the Algonquin Natural Gas Transmission property coming on to the assessment roll. So if a homeowner's assessed value and all other factors remain constant over those two years, the homeowner paid less in school taxes in 1819 than he or she did in 1718, again, assuming all factors remain constant. So in other words, Algonquin came on to the tax roll in 1819, reducing the tax rates. So again, looking in the, the blue font here, not only did the homeowners not experience a two-point-two percent increase as indicated by the tax levy, but they actually had a decrease in the tax rate, again, as a result of Algonquin. But still, I'm certain that we'll be asked, what will happen in 1920? Because that was a question that was asked at the last Budget Advisory Committee meeting, which prompted our further research into this. Tax rates, as we discussed two weeks ago, tax rates will not be known until the assessment rolls are finalized by the towns, which occurs in mid-August. The two towns, two main towns are Southeast, which has about seventy-five percent of our portion, and about twenty-five percent in Patterson. Carmel's a very small portion, less than one percent. The variables that go into setting tax rates are new commercial properties. So as we recognize, this year, we had Algonquin, which impacted the 2018/19 assessment roll and 2018/19 tax rates. However, it didn't affect our tax cap until the following year. We also have, where there were also changes to existing assessments, homestead, non-homestead portion, and newly qualified exemptions, and several other variables that, you know, the assessor's office and New York State are aware of. So the next steps are to reconvene our Budget Advisory Committee, which we're meeting on April eighth, so we'll be discussing this obviously much further. We'll then be asking Budget Advisory to provide further input and recommendations to the Board at their next meeting, which is scheduled for April ninth. And April 2030 is budget adoption. So we'll be revisiting this in the future. It was prompted to the Board after the last Budget Advisory. However, with this new information becoming available, we'll again request that the Budget Advisory review this information and then make another recommendation to the Board of Education at the next meeting. However, this same concept still applies, which was protected last week, the long-term effects of not utilizing the tax cap. So over the course of the past seven or eight years since the tax cap came into play, the district has not levied the full tax cap amount. And in fact, the district has not levied over one-point-one million dollars' worth of available revenue by virtue of the tax cap. And each successive year, that amount compounds. So while in the aggregate of each of those years, it added up to about one-point-one million, the present-day value of that is about one-point-two million. And again, thinking back on the Budget Advisory Committee, that equates to about twelve instructional positions that would be available had the district adopted the tax cap in each of those past seven years. So if you look at this chart here, where we stand today, this line right here, that's where we are today. And the amount of revenue that was foregone by not utilizing the tax cap is gone forever. There's no, there's nothing in the formula that allows for recovery of those, that revenue. It's gone forever. So where we stand today is at this juncture. So 2019, 20 is a critical point in time for the district in terms of our long-term future. So if the Board of Education were to adopt a tax levy of just two percent and go below the, the tax cap, which is, again, the benchmark set by New York State, the district would forego a significant amount of revenue again in this year. And as you can see, projecting out for another ten years, each year, this amount compounds due to future tax base growth factors and future inflation or CPI. By 2030, this would result in about three-point-four million dollars of revenue foregone, again, by not utilizing the full capacity of the tax cap. Again, the tax cap being the benchmark set by New York State. I hyperlink here an article that's on our website. It's written by a colleague of mine in an upstate school district, playing catch-up in the tax cap era. And it chronicles his district and their decisions in the past and how they affect the future. We're in a very similar position. In fact, in my opinion, it has a much greater impact on Brewster because property taxes make up about eighty percent of our revenue, whereas in this, this district that this article is written, it only makes up about a third of their revenues. So it's even more difficult for a district who relies so heavily on the, the tax levy to, to utilize the tax cap in order to enhance our program. Again, we'll be discussing this in greater detail in our Budget Advisory Committee on April eighth. So here's initial revenue budget summary, this continuation and recap of our last board meeting. Tax levy, I just discussed in detail. Local sources are increasing by seven hundred thousand, thanks to higher interest rates that are providing better returns on our, on our limited investments. State and federal aid is increasing slightly, just two-point-two percent. All indications out of Albany is that state aid is not going to increase significantly with the adoption of this budget. What we're hoping for at a minimum is that we will receive, or the, the budget will include a provision to establish a reserve for TRS, teachers' retirement system. Currently, there is no mechanism in place to protect school districts from these volatile spikes in TRS pension increases, and TRS is obviously the largest pension system in school districts. So it would be extremely beneficial if in the state budget, they would include provision of reserve funds to protect the district in the future. Appropriate fund balance is the portion of our savings that we use to balance the budget. We reduce this significantly, and in turn, we also reduce the amount of contingency within the budget. So a total, we have a hundred and one million dollar budget for an increase of three percent. The tax levy, of course, is contingent upon the adopted budget by the Board of Education, and the state budget, state aid is, of course, contingent upon the adoption of a budget by New York State. So where does the funding come from? The state is really holding all the cards here. The state created the tax cap, and the state allow, provides us an allowance in terms of state aid. So they're really controlling, which is actually probably more than ninety-five percent of our revenue budget, it's probably closer to ninety-seven percent. So the school district has very little local control over the revenue side of the budget. In terms of savings, the savings is a finite resource, you can only use it for so long. Fortunately, this district has been very conservative and has not relied on savings to balance the budget to any substantial measure of the past decade. Other revenues are basically interest income, which of course is, is limited in terms of investments. Here's an update on the teacher's retirement system. We did have three teachers who agreed to the incentive. So the lower cost of the replacement teachers affords us the ability to add instructional staff. And it's being recommended that we include an additional point-five FTE for math specialists at JFA as we implement our new K-5 math program. And there would be no increase in budget due to the savings achieved from the retirements of the three teachers. So that's good news for the budget. Summary of our expenditure budget, general support increased about four hundred thousand dollars. Instruction is the largest portion of our budget, of course. Increased by one-point-six million would have been even higher if not for a reclassification of provision to, for, to pay out accumulated sick time and retirement, which we re-class by under employee benefits. And that's actually spelled out in greater detail in the budget statement, which is posted on the website. Transportation increased just two percent. Employee benefits increased three and a half percent. Would have been even less if not for this reclassification, again, as a result of the belief in recalcification. again, as a result of the relief received from the TRS pension system. Our debt increased slightly, just about a hundred thousand dollars. Transfer to specialty fund also decreased slightly. This is the money that we set aside to fund our summer school program for students with disabilities. And our transfer to capital fund is a, uh, new, uh, component of our budget, which allows the school district to receive building aid in entirety in one year for small projects under a hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so what we're proposing is a small project at JFK to replace all exterior doors and locks, uh, to further enhance our safety protocols. So our, uh, expenditure budget, again, a hundred and one million dollars, an increase of three percent. And here's a look at our budget by functional category, which is consolidated to some extent. You see the majority of our budget goes to general education instruction, special education instruction, and employee benefits. Uh, debt service makes up the next largest category at seven-point-four percent. All other, uh, categories are, uh, just under five percent. Summary of the initial staffing requests. Uh, the detail of this list can be found on our website. I hyperlink the presentation that was made on February twenty-sixth that has, uh, the, the detail of this. Uh, please note the increase at JFK, which was proposed tonight. Uh, total staffing instructional FTEs, twenty-two-point-one. So we are making, uh, quite an investment in our program here, and, uh, it's mostly afforded by the, uh, the increase in the tax cap, as well as the decrease in TRS. So it's, uh, an opportunistic year in order to enhance our structural program, especially with regard to sites at the high school and RGNL mandates. So on May twenty-first, there are, there will be three propositions, assuming the Board of Education moves forward on, uh, two of the propositions I'll be voting on this evening. Proposition one, of course, is the general fund budget, a hundred and one million dollars, increase of three percent. The tax levy associated with it, seventy-seven million, an increase of four-point-zero-six percent. Proposition number two is to borrow, uh, funds to purchase school buses, seven school buses. We are in year seven of our fleet replacement plan. Uh, the first of five annual payments actually impacts the twenty-twenty-one school year and doesn't impact the nineteen-twenty school, uh, of which the, uh, budget we're discussing this evening. Furthermore, if you look at our long-range financial plan, we will have paid off the bus that we purchased five years ago. So the incremental impact is actually nominal for, uh, for this year's borrowing, because it's replacing, uh, borrowing that will be paid off in full. Proposition number three, uh, request transfer of funds to the capital, uh, capital prod, excuse me, transfer to fund a capital project at JFK. Um, not included in the district-wide capital improvement bond was, um, an upgrade of the HBAC system at JFK. So it was not included in the, uh, the forty-million-dollar bond that was passed, uh, about five years ago. Uh, instead, in order to complete this project, it would require a transfer in using accumulated fund balance, which is our savings. And there would be no additional cost to the taxpayers. And I also want to note that we are aided by New York State on this for up to fifty percent of the costs, actually slightly more than fifty percent of the cost, which we will receive in the form of building aid over the next ten to fifteen years. Uh, so the net cost in addition would actually be about a million dollars. But again, no impact on taxpayers because we're using our savings to fund this project. So on March twenty-sixth, there are still many, many unknown future variables. That's why it's called budget development, because new information seems to come out every couple of weeks. Final state aid application, we hope to learn by April first, although there is, uh, there is some doubt that they'll be able to come to an agreement by then. Uh, actual enrollment, uh, we will know in September, uh, but it's fluid. Our enrollment fluctuates on a given day. English's new language classification should also be known in September, but it's fluid. Special ed, same, CSEs are coming on currently. Unanticipated expenditures can happen at any moment. We've learned of a few during the school year. Year-end fund balance will be finalized in August. And, uh, as mentioned earlier, the final assessed values will also be known in August once the, uh, the towns finalize their tax rolls. So the important dates to remember, we have a Budget Advisory Committee meeting on April eighth, uh, followed by a board meeting on the ninth. Uh, April twenty-third is budget adoption. April, uh, May eighth is our, uh, final Budget Advisory Committee meeting, where we strategize in getting the word out to the community so they're aware of the budget. May fourteenth is the budget hearing, and May twenty-first is the annual vote trusty election. So please encourage your friends, neighbors, relatives to come out and vote. Visit our website for this presentation and all of the presentations that we've made to date. Uh, they're all under the twenty-twenty, uh, budget website. Uh, I also hyperlink to get that article I mentioned earlier that, uh, chronicles another school district in a similar situation in the long-term effects of not utilizing the tax cap. Uh, also, all of our Budget One-O-One documents are uploaded, the, uh, Youtubes, the question and answers, the infographics, they're all there for, uh, for reference. So please, uh, take a look at the website. Encourage your friends to take a look at the website as well. And that concludes our presentation. Questions at the board?
So before I ask a question, do you wake up in the middle of the night and just go through that, because you just have it like this?
When you live in it every day, you have no choice. But yes, yes, I, I'm living it, so.
So just to go back, so I follow along with everything. Um, and I'm good, except for one thing. Just to repeat on the slide that I'm at the top of. Um, but it had to do again with the Algonquin. And in general, the information you were looking into, the effect of it. And just, can you talk again about why, like, how? To me, it seems like a simple thing. Like, we know if they're not here, their taxes are a certain dollar amount. That comes in and it covers this amount of stuff, and therefore it's the new percent. Um, why does it seem more complicated than that?
So, excuse me. So the challenge is, the states, um, the states' recognition of Algonquin is on a lag from the town's recognition of Algonquin. So when the tax-based growth factor came out, it's actually, um, uh, kind of funny. So when the growth factor came out, I recognized that it was high. And I think it was back in November when I first mentioned it at a board meeting, you know, that it was going to be high and that there was a reason for it. So I reached out to, uh, to both towns, both Patterson and Southeast. And in our, for, in our initial conversation, Algonquin wasn't even on our radar because in, in our assessor's mind, this happened two years ago. So, um, there's a disconnect at the state in the timing of when these things are recognized. Um, so again, it's a, it's a lag in terms of when the state recognizes it from when the town does, because they, you know, the town, of course, is aware of it because it became fully taxable in the eighteen-nineteen year. But the state took a year to recognize it before including it in their tax-based growth factor, which created a decrease in the tax rates for eighteen-nineteen, but then may create a, uh, an increase in the tax rates for nineteen-twenty.
Right, but that increase really is reflecting the money that's coming from the businesses.
Correct, yes. And, and, and you can see, uh, you know, and I got this by looking up their actual tax bills. They paid eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars more in taxes in the eighteen-nineteen school year, which alleviated the tax burden of all other properties.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, so, you know, we, we hear it. It's, um, it's, to me, that's great news. Like, that four percent number, whatever it is, doesn't concern me because it's reflecting other money coming in. Um, and I think that we'll just have to do the best job we can in sharing that information, that it's, you're not getting taxed double from last year.
Right, because of what it, what it may appear, and each, each tax bill is going to be different depending on your assessed values. Assuming that your assessed values stay, remain constant, what you would have seen in twenty eighteen-nineteen is a decrease in your tax bill. And then you will see an increase in your tax bill next year, as opposed to just a, you know, a steady increase. But with Algonquin coming on, it actually provided tax relief in that one year, which would then increase in the following year as the tax-based growth factor hits.
And it needs to get, find balance to it.
Right. Now, uh, what I, what I also learned is that in, uh, Westchester County, they use, I believe, they use, um, assessments from two years ago in terms of setting their tax rates, which, which allows it to line up with the impact of the tax-based growth factor. Whereas in Putman County, and apparently all other counties throughout the state, there's a one-year lag, uh, you know, on behalf of the state. So it's, you know, it's challenging because it would, it would be great if it happened in the same year, because then the impact would be mitigated in that one year instead of having one year of a tax, you know, tax relief and then having another year of, you know, tax deduction.
Sweet. Okay. Thank you.
Oh, Victor, just a question on Prop Three. Just to make sure I understand this correctly, we're going to transfer two million, but we will get fifty percent of that back in the course of building aid over an accumulated number of years.
Correct.
And this does not affect our, I don't know the term, up at our rating? Basically, this won't affect us at all. We're safe to do this?
We are safe to do this because this money will come out of our savings. So it would not add to our debt. Um, it's coming out of our savings and it would reduce our fund balance. And we're in the process of projecting fund balance for this year. We're anticipating we're going to have a surplus at the end of this year. Uh, certainly not two million dollars of surplus, but, uh, enough that it would take out a much chunk of the, the cost of transferring this money from our savings to the capital fund in order to complete this project. And, and just, uh, you know, to follow up on that, from our last meeting, we already have approval from SED. Um, so we'd be able to move rather quickly on this. And as our, uh, architects and engineers mentioned, uh, the work would be able to start over the summer and likely continue into the school year until completion.
Victor, just to go back to, uh, just to go back to the tax base growth factor. I can now say that. Tax base growth factor.
Yes.
Um, we talked about, I think here in at the Buzzard Advisory Committee, that there's other commercial, new taxpayers, not just Algonquin. Do we know whether those other new tax sources, tax payments, uh, were they? Did we get the benefit of them last year?
Yes, we did. Yeah, so, so each of those properties came on to the assessment roll for setting eighteen-nineteen tax rates. And the reason why I, um, you know, now really just referring to Algonquin is because they were the most impactful. So they added thirty million dollars of assessed value to the assessment roll, whereas, uh, I believe Brewster Honda added less than five million, and Asendico the same. So they weren't nearly the significance as Algonquin was. Um, so that's why I'm really just referring to Algonquin at this point. But certainly, there were other properties that also added to the, to the tax base, which, you know, which created the, the increase in the tax-based growth factor.
Victor, I got a question about the, uh, the gas, um, property. You know, some, some of the people are a little concerned about, um, you know, properties close and, and all this other stuff. You know, about taxes being on vacant land versus active businesses. What, and you probably don't have the answer at the moment, and I'm sorry to blindside you here, just kind of looking at this. Um, what would you think the percentage is for the, uh, Algonquin gas value versus the other values? I, I would think that the gas is staying here forever. They're not going to dig that main up and move it. So, I mean, that's going to be a constant here forever. So maybe put to rest some of the people's fears that if all the commercial properties closed, you know, when they see this four percent, that three hundred million revenue or assessed value was brought into this district versus, you know, Asendico, you know, one-point-seven million, I mean, it's only a barn. Uh, Brewster Honda's two facilities, five million. And I don't know what the third one was, but I mean, that, you know, that, those other three could only add up to maybe seven, eight million dollars versus three hundred million.
I actually, uh, I spoke to Lori Bell from Southeast this, uh, this afternoon. She indicated that, um, Algonquin, before the, uh, building addition, because it did exist before this, it was just a smaller facility, I guess, uh, represented about three percent of the total tax base. After this major addition, it now represents about four percent of the tax base. So we're, we're not in a position like, um, like in Laffengers, where IBM was a substantial portion of the tax base. Even still, Algonquin only represents four percent of the, the tax base after this addition. I'm sorry, did that, did that answer your question?
I may have answered people's questions in the, um, audience or on, on the television. It was more of putting the fear away that, like, this gas main is, is leaving Brewster, which really seems like it's, it's bringing a tremendous amount of money.
Oh, oh.
I mean, if Brewster Honda closes, it's really not going to be as big of an impact as much as if the gas main left, and that's not leaving.
Right. And this addition alone brought in, um, I think it was eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars.
It's a lot of money.
Just based on the, the addition. So that's not even their, their total tax bill. I, I was just referring to the additional amount.
Right.
Well, and even with respect to Brewster Honda and Asendico, the fact that they've just done what they've done with these new buildings and this growth indicates that they're not going anywhere, you know? So while you're never sure of that, um, and I think what you're saying, Victor, is that we're not as dependent on commercial money as somewhere like Laffengers or some of the locations. So God forbid one did leave, it would be the end of the world. But I do think that you should recognize that, that, that what these commercial businesses have done in Southeast indicates that they are not going to be leaving anytime soon.
And we're definitely fortunate to have the commercial tax base that we do, because other rural districts that don't have that tax base, it's a lot, uh, you know, they're a lot more dependent on residential taxpayers. And obviously, their, their tax bills are much higher.
Okay, and so, is this all right? Can you hear me? Is this good enough? No? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, so now we move on to public remarks, uh, specific to any action item below. If any group or person wants to comment on any of the action items that the board will be, um, deciding on this evening, please come up to the podium and address the board. Uh, there'll be two minutes. Go back. Please come up.
Hi, my name's James Callanan. Um, I saw that you are now to be looking at the, uh, new Super East contract today, which is very exciting for Brewster, because a lot of people have noticed that and have already done the search on, um, this candidate. Um, I also perused the count of the contract and was looking at some of the differences from our old contract to the new one, and saw that some improvements were made, which is great news. Um, so the healthcare, um, the contribution of the healthcare, and of course, um, also being, um, at the end of termination of contract, there's also the termination of the healthcare. So I think that's great. But I know that there was an ask by me and by a couple of other, um, community members to look at other contracts and do a comparison. Um, I had specifically mentioned last year the Chautauqua contract. And, uh, understanding that, you know, Brewster and Chautauqua are significantly different school districts, but, you know, the value of what that superintendent is getting is not that far off from what the value of our superintendent is getting. In base salary, yes, it's two-eighty-nine versus two-twenty-five. Um, but when you look at the other factors, you know, we have three weeks more vacation, which equates to about fifteen K more. Um, you have, uh, a difference in healthcare contribution where they contribute more. Um, we have more sick days. We have, at retirement, um, there's a cap at Chautauqua that when they retire, it's an eighteen-thousand-dollar payout on sick days, whereas we have up to fifty-six thousand when the salary is two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. There's also a term in there that gives the district a lot of leeway with termination for convenience, which I did not see. Perhaps I missed it. Um, but termination for convenience is a really big thing. Hopefully, this, this super, it's going to be here for the next five years, and it's going to be a great relationship. But when you look at the Chautauqua contract, you have termination for convenience, and there's a one-year max payout, which is an incredibly great safety net for Brewster to look at adopting. So some of those elements were really thought were, um, you know, important points in creating our new, um, and it was requested by the community in creating our new contract. So I might be too late, too late now, but it's definitely something that we should be looking at in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I will close the, uh, public remarks portion and move on to more action items. And the first item up is the approval of, um, resolution for the Board of Education to enter into an employment contract with Dr. Lori Van Love to serve as superintendent of schools, August first, two thousand nineteen, through July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Um, so I can take that one. And, um, before I ask for the motion and then the board's discussion, uh, just to, for, because I don't think that's in there. It's just really the contract and some information. Um, first, on behalf of the board, I want to thank the I want to thank the entire community for your participation in providing feedback and really outlining a lot of things that contributed to the work we did in selecting the final candidate. So it was great to see the community come together and, you know, work together for this purpose. And just a little bit about Dr. Banlow. She is actually originally from New York, where she started her career. And she is now in Hallsboro, New Jersey, where she is superintendent and has been since 2015. She will be moving, obviously, to New York and closer to Brewster and not in Brewster, she's looking. And assuming we, you know, pass the contract this evening. And the board will be sending out tomorrow a letter to the community, assuming we approve the contract this evening, with more information about Dr. Banlow and thoughts from the board, as well as some information on upcoming dates. Come August and September, we'll, you know, there'll be opportunity for the community to meet with her and kind of a meet and greet. And prior to her official start date, she is open to coming into the district and, you know, meeting the district personnel as well as the students to get acquainted before she officially starts. So just a little bit of information for now. Like I said, a letter will formally go out tomorrow as well as a formal press release. And with that, I need a motion. Carrie and a second, Eric. And any comments or questions from the board about the contract up for approval or Dr. Banlow?
I'll just say that Glenn and I went down to visit the Hallsboro School District, as some of you may know. And we received wonderful feedback from the people that she works with. And it looks like she's excited to come here. So we look forward to having her arrival. And, you know, like I said, the people had nothing but nice things to say about her. So it was a nice visit.
Thank you. Thank you for making the trip. Okay. So, I mean, I think I can add just simply because there's not much discussion that can really happen about a negotiation of the contract. But I know that this board, you know, we really, we do always work very diligently at coming up with the best negotiated terms that we can for anyone that works in the district. And I think that's really all I can say about that. But I just wanted to point that out. So, okay, so now we have a motion and a second. And we just, now we're talking about, okay, a little bit of discussion this time. So all those in favor of action item number one, approving the contract for Dr. Lori Banlow? Who's in favor? Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you. And now we move on to action item number two. Approval of proposal for legal services for 2019, 2020 with Thomas, Johan, Haxman, Pediger, and Mail L.L.P. And I guess I can talk a little bit about that. So the terms are, I believe they just kept it essentially the same as last year. And one thing to note is that even though we can approve this proposal for legal services, it doesn't restrict us at any time from going out for an RFP, for attorneys to represent the district. It's just for while they are definitely in our service, you know, what the terms of that will be. So I just wanted to point that out as well. So I need a motion and a second. Kristen and Eric, thank you. Any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you. We move on to the approval of the bus bond proposition. And this is a roll call vote. We don't have to talk about it because we know what it is. So I do need a motion first, Carrie, and a second. Kristen, thank you, and take it by Susan.
Your vote, Ms. Cappell?
Yes.
Ms. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gressner?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
And Ms. Secker?
Yes.
The motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you. We move on now to the approval of A, Resolution for Secret Type II Action. B, Capital Project Proposition Funded by Accumulated Fund Balance. Again, a roll call vote. Do you want to comment on A?
Sure. So A is a requirement of the state. Secret is an Act of Interest for State Environmental Quality Review Act. The determination is that this would not have any negative impact on the environment by completing this capital project. And then obviously, B is the proposition for the board to set forth to the voters in May to vote on whether or not they will fund this project, again, using accumulated savings and no cost of tax.
Okay, thank you. We did, we need a motion? Okay, so we need a motion. Eric and a second, Kristen, thank you.
Your vote, Ms. Cappell?
Yes.
Ms. Cunningham?
Yes.
Mr. Gressner?
Yes.
Mr. Heinz?
Yes.
Yes.
The motion passes, 5-0.
Thank you. We now move on to the approval of installment purchase agreement, IPA, with Southern Westchester Bosse's for the purchase of technology devices.
Yes, as Mr. Trailer presented last week, by participating with Bosse's, it affords us the ability to get state aid on these purchases over each of the next four years. So this is actually going to result in some cost avoidance as well as the COSER agreement allows us to purchase certain services from Bosse's that we are currently purchasing independently. So this is certainly a win-win for the school district as we replace those devices that we placed in the hands of each of our students, starting three years ago with Smart School Bond Act.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please? Kristen and a second, Carrie. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you. Approval of, number six, approval of participation in cooperative bids. A, Educational Data Services Materials and Supplies. B, Putnam Northern Westchester Bosse's Materials and Supplies. And C, Southern Westchester Bosse's Materials and Supplies. D, Clarkstown Central School District Diesel Fuel.
Yes, these are our annual purchasing consortiums that we participate in in order to achieve, you know, economies of scale. The more school districts that participate, obviously, the better rates advantage will provide us.
Okay, thank you. Need a motion, please? Carrie and a second, Kristen. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 5-0. We move on to number seven, approval of 2018-19 Health Services Contract.
Yes, these are our annual health service contracts that are reimbursements mandated by the state to other public school districts that provide health services to Brewster students who are attending private schools within their boundaries. So for example, if we have a student who's attending St. James Elementary School in Carmel Central School District, Carmel's required to provide health services to that student in the form of a nurse and et cetera. And Brewster is required to reimburse Carmel for those costs because the students are from Brewster.
Okay, thank you. I need a motion, please? Carrie and a second, Eric? Questions or comments? I just have a question. So because it's a reimbursement, that's why it's stated as 2018-19?
Correct. So the year hasn't yet completed. They've invoiced us and this is for the agreement which will pay at the conclusion of this school year.
Perfect. Okay. We move on to the approval of Revised Retirement Incentive Agreement. Is that right? Between the Brewster Central School District and BTA regarding the change of effective retirement date from August 20th, 2019 to June 30th, 2019.
That was just an overlook. The effective retirement date is supposed to be June 30th, 2019 for the members of the BTA. So it was an overlook on the part of legal counsel and that was corrected. So that's the only item that needed to be corrected on the retirement incentive for BTA.
So what should, what should it be?
It was, it should be, the new date is June 30th, 2019. On the original retirement incentive, the date was August 20th, 2019. So that date's incorrect. So all that we're doing is to correct the date to June 30th. Sorry.
May I have a motion, please? Kristen and a second, Eric, thank you. Okay, just wanted to clarify that I didn't need to change what was on the agenda, the language on the agenda. Okay. Anyone else have questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Motion passes, 5-0. Okay, and we have the consent agenda.
On the personnel agenda, there are a few items that I'd like to point out. One, first and foremost, is to congratulate Ms. Maggie McCabe Andriolo, who is being appointed tonight as the principal of the CB Star Elementary School. Congratulations, Maggie. Anything you'd like to say?
Just thank you very much for the opportunity. And Brewster's been my second home for 15 years now and I look very much forward to this next chapter.
Thank you. The second appointment, which we're excited about, is the appointment of a school counselor to the JFK Elementary School. That's Helena Ballucci, Ballucci, who is actually married to Michaelucci, right here at H.H. Wells. This represents one of the school counselors that the Board of Education agreed to bring on board early, rather than to wait for the mandated date, which was in the 2019-2020 school year. This means that Ms. Helga Clazette, who's the K-12, I'm sorry, K-8, mental health counselor, becomes the school counselor after this action at the CB Star Elementary School. So I'd like to welcome Helena and thank Dr. Zambly and his team for vetting and interviewing and finding the spine candidate. In addition, there are a few other items on the consent agenda that I'd like to draw your attention to. First and foremost, Victor already alluded to this in terms of the additional savings that we were able to take advantage of to hire a .5 or to propose the hiring of a .5 math specialist at JFK is a result of three very significant retirements, all of which are certainly, we are, these are not people we look forward to leaving or having leave the district. Ms. Janet Murphy took advantage of the retirement incentive at CB Star Elementary School. Ms. Kathy Norman, speech therapist, took advantage of the retirement incentive. She's also at JFK. And Ms. Doris Shirkin, who's the physical educator at Brewster High School, also took advantage of the retirement incentive. So we congratulate those three finite educators for taking advantage of the incentive and we wish them well in their futures as retirees. And I'm sure they're going on to do very exciting things. So could we give them a hand of applause? And I think that takes care of retirements and new employment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we need a motion and a second, please? Kristen and a second, Eric, thank you. All those in favor? Motion passes, 5-0. Thank you. Okay. So we move on to remarks. One thing, though, that I just, if I could start, I want to make a comment on a revision to something else on the consent agenda, which has to do with Dr. Henning's resignation and the time that he'll be leaving, which is June 30th now, 2019. And that presents for the board a month of July where the law does require us to have a superintendent or an interim superintendent on hand at all times. So we will need to, with this passing of this, we'll need to have a follow-up conversation on how we're going to address July. And so we'll figure that out and then we'll bring it forth at a next meeting. Okay, so that's one thing. And then the other thing I just wanted to comment on was the 2023 presentation. And it was great to see, you know, just that we're always thinking about the future. But not just the future, how we can, it's not about taking us to just the next level, but always looking at how we can improve on what we're doing now. So I don't necessarily always see the future as better, different, but better improvement, you know, of what we're doing. I'm always looking for ways to figure out how to work on gaps that we discover along the way and just improve on the work we're doing, which takes us into the future. And there was, I saw a lot of that in that presentation. I appreciated it personally and I thought there's a lot of great things. Like I actually learned back at high school to take some of those classes. But I'm looking forward to what, you know, our students will have for them. So I just wanted to say thank you for that presentation. Victor, one day, maybe after another 20 years, you'll sit here all and get used to your presentations. But it's amazing how we, you know, presented it, go through all of it and be clear. And, you know, thank you for just being there to answer my questions. Anyone else? Yeah?
Sort of goes along with your comments about the changes that are being proposed at the high school. But Eric and I had the opportunity to visit Brewster High School last week and to visit, I think, five or six different classes. And it really was a great experience. It's actually the first time that I've had the opportunity to visit a school, mostly due to my own schedule. And it was fun. It was impressive. And it just, you know, I left that day with a really good sense of what's going on in the high school, which is what I feel like I have for my own child attending the high school. But, you know, over the year, we hear different issues going on at the high school and I feel like it's sort of gotten a little bit of a bum rap. But anyway, we went to the aerospace class, which was certainly not like any class that was ever offered when I went to high school. I thought we were in a history class, an inclusion English class, I believe, ninth grade. We also visited a DCC English class for seniors and a math class where they were working on a project. Well, I think in every class, they were working on some sort of small group project. But in the math class, working on a project relating to personal finance. And it was like a dilemma about how to pay off a credit card. Imagine that, I can't believe people have those issues. But it was really, all of the kids were just really engaged. The teachers were engaged. And it was really a great experience. And we actually got a sneak peek at the robot that they made and had at a competition this weekend. So it was great. And actually, one more thing. We also visited the guidance department, which is a small, they don't have a lot of space. But it was so energetic when we were in there and that was an impromptu stop. It wasn't on our schedule. I mean, there were kids in there. There was a guidance counselor doing a small group with probably 10 kids in the class. And they were talking through classes for the next year. And there were just kids in the hallway, kids picking up information at the front door. So it just was very active and a lot of energy. So I just wanted to thank again Ms. Orler and Ms. Sullivan for bringing us around and Dr. Gosh and Dr. Henning because it was really a great experience. Thanks. Thanks.
I just want to touch base on the 2023 task force. I want to personally thank Dr. Gosh, Ms. Horler, Ms. Sullivan. I cannot, and I wish Mike Cuddy stayed. I'm sure he's home, breaking out his drills and his saws and all that stuff. I've never been so excited. I'm about as excited as when Victor walks by a conversation at a party, here's tax cap, tax levy, he stops in his tracks. Thirty, I have 31 years in the skilled trades, and I graduated Brewster High School, and we had trade shop classes and other things here. When he's talked about mathematics and carpentry and construction, it's a course, my daughter actually just sent me a text maybe a week ago that they were offering it. I asked her to send me some info on it because she wants to take engineering to college to see if it would fit, you know, her, her curriculum and what she needs. I, I hope this is a seed that's planted because this country does not have enough men, young, young men and women entering our trades. I can tell you that for a fact. And the money that is out there to be made using your hands is unlimited. And I am super excited to, I have it right here, I'm a break from it. I mean, I'm like shaking here. I'm so excited about this class. If Mike wants me to talk, I'll talk, I'm not a great public speaker. But thank you for, you know, planting the seed. I really, really hope it goes somewhere.
So as the, excuse me, as the liaison for the Brewster Education Foundation, I just want to take this opportunity to remind everyone that April 26th is our annual spring gala. Every year, it gets better and better as far as the involvement of the people who, from all throughout the community. It's always sold out. It's a wonderful fundraiser to fund so many great projects that really enhances the educational experience of the kids. So April 26th, Salem Country Club, if you, I will take the opportunity to mention it again at the next meeting, but if you have not already, please put it on your calendar and come expect a very good time for a very good cause. And I hope to see everybody there.
Okay, so now we move on to public remarks. And you are welcome to come to the podium, address the board, two minutes. Anyone else?
Hi. So going through the budget, you know, being part of the budget committee has been helpful. But I just want to bring us back to a year ago, when we were here in this room, and we heard how dire a situation we were in financially and how much trouble we were, and we were releasing 18 positions. Fast forward throughout the year, we've had to add positions back in. We've suddenly had the money to add positions back in. And now we come up to the start of the budget season or middle of the budget season, and we're talking about adding 30 more positions. These are 30 more positions that when I look at, I think we need. I think we've raised our, our staff to the point that we are not producing high-quality education. My challenge is, is that how are we going to make certain that we're not in the same position next year as we just were last year? You know, Victor just mentioned to us, we are in a unique year that already next year we are looking at higher future employment, employer contributions to the TRS. So if we go in and add 30 people, and then next year, we got to cut them again. You know, we already talked about the candidates being limited. If we become the school district that hires and fires, hires and fires, because we can't appropriately manage our budget, we become an undesirable school district and won't be able to get the best candidates. So how can we say that and make a commitment to the community that, all right, let's lock this in and let's not be adding positions and tapping into funds during the course of the school year? Thank you.
Thank you.
May I respond to that?
After the close?
At any point.
Okay. Anyone else?
My name is Karen Doby, and I just wanted to speak and acknowledge Mr. Fonzie and the tremendous job he's been organizing and leading the international dinner on March 15th. It was just fantastic for anyone that attended. The passion he has for teaching and his dedication to the students is outstanding and uplifting to see. The mutual respect between Mr. Fonzie and the students was clear to see. His positive energy and enthusiasm inspired students outside of the program to perform and share their talents at the event, as well as bringing 32 different families together to accomplish a common goal, which is very hard to do. I know that the district will be looking to add many more members to their faculty, and I'm hoping that the administration, the Board of Ed, will be looking for candidates that possess the same leadership, professional, and interpersonal qualities that Mr. Fonzie holds. He is just a magical teacher that has inspired so many students at the high school and as well as parents. And I can speak for my daughter and many of her friends. He is just, I, I can't even put into words, just a wonderful human being, and we are very lucky to have him here in the district. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
Hi, I'm Connie, and I just would like to mention that I saw Mamma Mia. Mamma Mia, that was awesome. Everybody was coming out loud, loud, loud. And I'm very excited about the 2023 initiative, also especially the vocational. I've been after that for many, many years. That is a big need here, and I'm very happy to see that that's going to be implemented. And Ms. Andriello, the Brewster Central School District is my second home too, after my hometown.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. Okay, so we will close the public remarks portion, and Victor, you want to?
Yeah, I'd just like to respond. So this school year, there were a number of positions which were added to the budget. However, most of those positions, in fact, I think the only one that has been filled to date is the school counselor at JFK. So they've been authorized, but they haven't yet been filled. So we haven't spent any money to date on any of these positions that have been authorized. Each year is unique, and it's unique beyond our control. So we couldn't control the TRS rate last year, which was so detrimental to the district to the point where we had to not fill vacant positions. And I, I don't believe that you had the accurate number, and I don't know off the top of my head. But each year's unique. So this year, we are fortunate where the TRS is going down, and we're also fortunate that the tax cap is going up. Next year is uncertain. However, we do foresee there being another spike in TRS, which will be detrimental to the district. In terms of long-range financial planning, it's extremely challenging, and there's really nothing that the district can do to ensure that every single staff member that we hired today will be maintained a year from now, five years from now, 10 years from now. Because each, as you know from our budget 101s, the cost to employee, any employee is either dictated by a collective bargaining agreement or a mandated contribution to, you know, TRS, ERS, or FICA, or any of those other, you know, required salary and benefits. So each year is challenging. Moving forward, of course, the district strives to maintain the instructional programs that we're building today, but it's largely beyond our control that we can't simply say that, you know, next year, we're not, we're going to blow off TRS and not pay it. It's, it's beyond our control. It's not a matter of managing the budget, it's a matter of those things that are beyond our control that will take many, many years to address.
Thank you, Victor. Okay, we do not have executive session this evening, so we just need to go join the meeting. I need a motion? Carrie and a second. Eric, all those in favor? Motion passes, five zero. Thank you, and Mr.?